All right. I don't know.
Is this something we reviewed in the January agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just, I'll just make.
I just read it. I gotta process it.
Yeah, I don't think you were telling me that the first page is the existing.
Yeah, Will just told me.
Yep.
Can you tell on the screen if that's the camera view is adjusting at all to the lighting? It's kind of overwhelming, but yeah, I don't think it changed anything.
Does it adjust to the lighting?
Yes, it's not picking that up very well.
I did learn I'm gonna sit next to Ron instead of you though, after looking at that.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, I guess it's looking right at us now. Hi. Squeeze you in here and I guess we'll put Tim on the phone now.
Yeah.
I'm slightly limelight. Yeah, I was thinking I might move.
I know, out of the ones we got started here.
Was this gonna mess up the lighting by dimming the light?
No, all my stuff is quite good over there.
Okay, it's just that the light was. Yeah, that's fine.
Well, did you?
Yeah, exactly, you did. All right, so you have done the short straw time. That's gonna be you at the end there, because we need the.
I have to draw a straw then.
Projector view.
I just changed it. All right.
I'm gonna take your foot rest.
I'm not resting, Mike, you don't. You're good.
I'll give you a better foot rest, how's this?
I'm good, right there.
Get you some popcorn, too.
Thank you. I disagree with Mike.
Yeah, I hear that. How is everybody this evening?
All right, Tim, how you doing?
Good.
Just for me?
So that is a card for Hannah. Her mother passed away recently.
Who?
Hannah, who worked this.
Yeah, it was Hannah's.
Yeah, her mother passed away recently, so that's why she wasn't at the last meeting. So that's the card that we're all signing, the.
How's she doing?
Uh, Hannah, I don't know.
All of a sudden, you know?
Good morning. I'm good. Uh, six o'clock, I'm on my phone, so I called the meeting to order. First up is modifications to the agenda. Just, uh, we'll mention, uh, there's a revision to the payroll policy that I'll mention later. Probably private citizens' concerns, uh, and, uh, a change that had to be made that would be approved until the January meeting. Any other modifications? Okay. First off is approval of meeting minutes. First is November 3rd, 2025.
Both are approved.
I can second that.
Any discussion or proposed revisions? If not, I'll most in favor of approving the minutes of November 3rd, say aye.
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 As opposed? Oh.
I'm on vacation for a week, so it can't be me, sorry.
Me.
Can't be you.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll volunteer to do it again, but I can tell you I can't, you know, I'll try and get it done as, you know, soon as possible, but December 1 minutes, I'm still about only 50% of the way through. I've had other things come up this week.
Well, you, uh, you take very detailed notes and I would propose that you can do the bare minimum as required by the Vermont state laws and GLCT recommendations, which is the motions, the actions. The actions pass. I mean, you can make this really brief. It could be less than a page for sure, but that's up to you.
Okay, I mean, what you're saying makes sense, because we do have the backup of the recording.
Exactly right, and you're not a transcriptionist.
Yeah, so I know, I'm trying to, trying to go in off of past drafts where that was the case, we didn't have the recording, we had the recording and no video, so.
Yep.
That's a, that's a valid point. I can just make them brief.
Okay, so there aren't any.
We do have the audio or video tonight?
Yes, we do, it's right here, yeah. Yeah, you're, you're center stage on that one, so good to see you looking your Sunday finest this evening.
Well, I'm sorry for the people watching.
Oh, don't be, um, but no, so to answer your question, Ron, uh, I move that we postpone approval of the December 1 meeting minutes until the January regular meeting.
You, you made a motion at table, is that what you said?
Yeah, to postpone until the January meeting.
I can second that.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 As opposed?
Are the, uh, the drafts on the, uh, website right now?
Uh, the draft for November 3rd was on the website, the draft for December 1st is not.
Okay.
Okay, uh, next up is the Madbrook Bridge payment. Heather or Marcel, uh, can correct me, but whoops, yeah, that's Marcel. But it's my understanding that our choices are taken out of the general fund, out of, I may have this wrong, capital reserve, is that what it's called? Or, uh, line of credit, which we don't have enough left in the line of credit to cover the bill, but, and I said, or a combination of one or more of those. Does Treasury's office have a recommendation, or, or do you want us to just forge ahead?
Uh, my suggestion would be to take the balance needed out of the reserve fund. The general fund right now is flush enough to pay the school district payment, which will be due next week, but I would not want to overdraw that, so I would suggest taking it from the reserve account.
You didn't want us to take more out on the loan, even though we have some room?
So if we, if we go out of the reserve fund, if I'm just looking again at the fund activity, on the town meeting report from last year, or excuse me, the town report from last year, we've got a bunch of different line items in here. If we take, if we're gonna take 231,000 out of the reserve, is that gonna come off on a, uh, like a prorated basis from each of these accounts? Or would it be from one specific line item, like, say, you know, just for the sake of argument, I see town purchasing reserve fund is sitting at 188,296.32.
So there is money left in the line of credit, but not for the total amount. So we would only be taking a portion from the reserve account.
Okay, so how, what portion would we be taking?
So there's about two months ago, I need to take that in the line of credit.
Probably like that.
Yeah, so we'd be taking about 60,000, give or take, um, and I would suggest we would take it from the town purchasing fund and then leave for FEMA to re-look.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, so only, you know, ballpark the 60,000 number is what we need to appropriate tonight.
So we are going to maximize the loan?
We are gonna max out the loan.
Okay, did I ask that wrong? Because that's what I was.
So I thought that you meant you wanted us to go above the million dollars.
No, 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 I was, I, I was wondering if we were gonna spend up to the amount that we have in loan, which is the million dollars, so we are gonna do that.
We are going to do that.
Okay.
Have the capital reserve accounts. I'm just wondering, are we, is what we're paying in interest on the line of credit higher than what we're receiving in that capital reserve account? So I was just wondering, what's that?
Yes. The answer to your question is yes.
Are the, are the CDs where, or something where it's penalized, or?
They're treasury, um, bills, key bills.
So how do those, sorry for my ignorance, but how do those work? I, I'm just wondering if it makes more sense to take all of it.
The banks pay a certain percentage rate, um, and money is invested in that, some big bank does that.
Okay, I, I was just wondering whether it made more sense to take it all out of the capital reserve accounts.
You take it all out of the general fund, and then if we need money later on, we can take it out of the home reserve fund, so.
But Heather, you thought that with the school payment?
I don't know how much we have. You know how much that is? We have like 4.2 million in data right now. But still, that would leave us a million dollars. I think we could, I think we could afford to get it out of the. You know, please ask me about what he's. Reserve fund, we slung it back later.
We get interest back?
Well, I wanna ask that right question. Yeah, yeah. So the thought that we're maxing out a, a million dollar line of credit sounds alarming to me. Can you provide the context for that? Do we get that money back? Do we get it with interest?
Nope.
What?
Seventy-five percent, maybe twelve and a half percent from the state.
Seventy-five percent coming from FEMA, so we have 250,000, we have to somehow make up in the budget?
Yep.
Didn't we say at one point that they would reimburse us the interest charge? Is that not true?
Yeah, that's not included, that's not included, this, we have a lot, right now, we have a loan of 801,000 dollars.
And we pay.
Seventy-five thousand, maybe, when we're all shiggied off, FEMA may pay seventy-five percent of that. We might get twelve and a half percent from the state, we're still gonna be on the, on the hook for at least twelve and a half percent.
But my question is, do we get reimbursed from FEMA for the interest that we paid on the loan? No?
Not full amount.
Not full amount.
Seventy-five percent on that as well?
I have no idea what that is.
That's at the very end of all of the projects, which is the CAFD, which is interest and Marcel and my time.
And they may reimburse us.
Yeah, Marcel and my time is reimbursed at 25%.
So I'm still curious about the balance in the equation. Are we better off using our reserve fund or using the, the loan funds? Total expenditure?
Loan funds is gonna cost us more interest. That's at almost 6%.
Some of which may be recoverable, but we don't know.
We don't know, we don't know the total on that yet.
All right, so here's, I guess this is the question, do you have any way to even ballpark right now, which avenue is a better way to allocate funds? Spitball.
My guess? I'd take it out of the general fund. We'll pay this, we'll pay the state back, whatever we owe them, um, and then if we need to take money, we'll take it out of the reserve fund. But that's my ballpark guess.
Instead of maximizing the loan, or in addition to maximizing?
You know, pay more interest to maximize the loan.
I think he said instead of.
Right.
Yeah.
Can we pay the outstanding amount that we owe right now out of the reserve fund?
Outstanding amount of which one?
Well, yeah, I don't even remember which bill we're trying to pay.
Madbrook, Madbrook Bridge.
You're asking if we can pay the 231,000 dollar bill.
That's for Madbrook.
The Madbrook Bridge.
Out of the reserve fund, yes.
Yes.
Marcel recommended the general fund.
Oh. Hi.
We're basically, it's.
Didn't know we had so many pockets.
It's either you pay it out of the reserve and backfill with the capital, or you pay it out of the capital and backfill if we need to with the general fund. I mean, it's six to one, it's a shell.
Yeah, well, there's part of me that likes Sue's idea of using somebody else's money, but we pay interest on that, so we're financially better off using one of our own funds, if I'm hearing you right.
Certainly can.
Advisable?
That's up to the select board.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I know, but I'm looking for advice.
I just know there's a very large school district check coming out next week from the general fund, so it, it really is, I mean, I would pay from the reserve account and then to make sure there was enough money in the general fund to pay the school district.
And if we got into a pinch, can we use the loan to pay the school, the education?
The loan is from the vote, FEMA.
I mean, the line of credit.
Oh, I see, all right, well, that's interesting.
The line of credit was specific for the disaster.
Yeah. So I, I'm not opposed to maximizing that loan, paying interest in its, uh, roulette wheel, what we get back, but.
Well, I just wanna know the best way to navigate this at the least cost to the town. Use part of the reserve to pay and hold as much as you think we're gonna need to pay the education fund and use some portion of the loan funds to make up whatever balance we need to make up? Can you give us the numbers for that?
No, there would be, we'd max, we'd max out the million dollars line of credit, and there'd be about 60,000 dollars that needed to come from either the general fund or the reserve account to pay the bill.
I thought what's best for the town of Waterford is to minimize the amount of loan we're taking out, but not endanger the education payment that's coming due.
Okay, so then there'd be 231,000 coming out of the reserve account.
And you can still meet the education budget.
Out of the general.
And then to circle back to what you said earlier about backfilling the reserve accounts from the, you said the capital reserve or the general fund?
Well, we wouldn't need to backfill the, the capital reserve account from the general fund, we would just wait for FEMA to.
Yeah. We would just wait there.
I see. Okay, so if we, so we take, say we take the full 231 out of special reserves.
We don't have 231 in the special reserve, in the town purchases, we have 190.
You have 190 in the reserve?
Yep.
Okay, so if we take, so if we, we'd essentially be depleting the entire reserve fund.
In that line of, yes.
Oh, this is in, this is in town purchasing, okay. And then we could take the, just napkin math, uh, the extra, the extra 43, 44,000 out of general? And we'd, and you think we'd still have enough to handle the school tax?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that would be, I'll make a motion to, um, pay for the Madbrook Bridge using the 188,296 dollars and 32 cents in the, am I, am I getting that number? No, I'm not getting that number right. I, I recant. I move that we.
188,971.39.
Thank you, I move that we expend that amount out of the town purchasing reserve fund towards the, uh, Madbrook Bridge bill and then pay the difference out of the general fund.
Does that have a second? I'll second that for discussion, at least.
Okay.
And to recap, if we do it the way Will just moved, we are still liquid as far as your expected education check due, okay?
Yes.
My, my opinion is we ought to take it out of the general fund and then if we don't have enough to take out of the reserve to avoid losing interest on those, but that's just my opinion.
Walk me through it, though, what, what, why was that, why would that be better?
Cause you're paying, you're using more of general fund money and less of.
The reserve fund money is making us money.
Well, that's interesting.
Well, at a, at a very slow rate, but.
Yes, right, yes.
Yeah.
But that's just my opinion.
Is the difference enough to, to matter to the motion?
I mean, if you look at the total interest accrued on the town purchasing line item from end of fiscal year 2023 to end of fiscal year 2024, you've got essentially 188,000 dollars in that line item. You accrued 360 dollars of interest, so it's not.
That's a percent.
Yeah, it's, it's, we're talking tenths of a percent.
That's a rounding error, okay.
So.
Okay. I'm surprised it's so low, but.
Yeah, that should be like a CD rate.
To your point of the, um.
It can't be a CD rate.
The merits, Ron, of taking it out of the, the general fund, um, if we, this 188,000, that's in town purchasing reserve, um, what else, what else one would that be used for? And two, how did that 188,000 accumulate there and how do we refill it in the event that, you know, FEMA doesn't, the FEMA money doesn't come in, we aren't able to get back up to that 188 number?
Cause we have to pay the loan off first, so we have to get that much money first, 800, whatever thousand.
We're never gonna get that money back, we're gonna have 200,000 dollars in the hole, no matter how you look at it.
Okay.
We're never gonna get our loan back.
Hundred, hundred thousand minimum.
Two hundred thousand.
I said twelve and a half from the state?
Cause twelve and a half.
Yeah, but the state's not guaranteed right now.
No, I, I'm just at minimum 100,000, because we're gonna have to pay at least twelve and a half percent of it. Between 100 and 200,000.
Yep.
But yeah, I, I didn't realize it was earning what was in the reserve fund was earning such low.
Critteable.
I can go back and dig, look at my sheet.
Any, any more discussion? We do have a motion.
Um, good.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, I don't know if you wanna read it again, Will, or everybody else.
Take it out of the reserve fund first, and then the main, the general, was your motion?
Yes, yes.
Approximately 180,000 out of the reserve and approximately 34K out of the general, approximate.
Yeah, deplete the town purchasing reserve and make up the difference from the general fund.
Okay. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Say.
231.
Next up is.
31,000.
Change. 2026 budget presentation.
I will start with the budget, I do not remember there being any questions or concerns. This budget here is with the 25,000 dollars for capital improvements that the board agreed to put in there for future, um, so the budget would be 181,000.
And that's, uh, what percentage up from last year, Heather, please?
Um, with the 25,000 that was put in there, about 21.3.
21.3%.
Without the 25,000, what percent?
It was, yeah, 4.6.
4.86, okay.
Which was in line with.
Yeah.
What it probably should be.
No, if, if I may here, so the three columns we're seeing is the leftmost, um.
Sorry, 25 budget.
Okay.
25 actual, um, through, that's actually through.
I saw that too.
Oh, can we come all the way down and see where they are in their budget right now?
Okay, so the 131.
They're 131 of the 149, yes.
Okay.
So that, it looks like they're gonna, it looks like they're gonna do, they're gonna meet their budget this year.
I'm sorry, the 131 is as of which date?
The 7th, which was yesterday.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Are they actually anticipating coming in a little under budget?
Um, there'll probably be about a 4,000 dollar surplus in this.
Is it in a category where it can roll over into their capital?
So there's an interesting fund.
Yeah, okay, very good.
If I can make a point of order here, is there a way at all to dim and or turn off these lights? Some people online are saying that it's whitewashing out the projector screen.
Do it the other way?
Switch back here.
Oh, that's a good point.
Sometimes though, the motion activated ones, if you push, oh, all right. Let's see, how is that looking on line?
It looks better to me. Well, I don't know if I can write notes.
So were there any questions, concerns, or changes?
No, I'm happy with it. Anybody else?
Nope, it looks good to me.
Yeah, cause if you, if you take the, the capital improvements out, it's really in a.
It's a reasonable increase, but that is absolutely necessary with that building. It's gonna need a new furnace soon, it's got roof issues, and it's got the heating problem up in the attic, so I think that's a fair number.
Okay.
Could you just slide up the screen, just, okay. Just to take a look at it. Just looking to see if there's.
Yeah, it's not working. Hello?
Were you looking at something specific, Ron?
No, I was just looking to see if there was any.
You can, we can.
They didn't have to overspend, I saw that they overspent in the repairs of their building. The, that we only budgeted 2,500 and they ended up having to spend that, so.
And some of that is actually offset by a passive grant that they received, that was to replace, um, gaskets for the doors.
Oh, yeah, okay. No, I just wanted to look to see how different line items.
You might be able to approve the screen view by unscrewing that light bulb.
Okay.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Hold on for me. That's too small?
Yeah, a little bit. Perfect.
Okay. So you're seeing again, this column is the budget, this is the actual, this is what's left, and this. So you're seeing again, this column is the budget, this is the actual, this is what's left, and this is the proposed twenty twenty-six budget. Not sure if there were any questions, comments. The budget for next year is six forty-one and one dollar and eighteen cents. That's an eighteen percent.
Yeah, I'd like to go back up to the town office salaries and benefits. I know you, you had to put benefits in there not knowing who would be elected. How did that work out?
Yeah, how many wages is it?
Eighty-three.
That includes.
There's the benefit.
Two people, spells. Avoiding twelve months.
So this is what I'd like to discuss. The town treasurer, um, Heather was telling us is twenty hours a week. So that isn't currently a full-time position. Is the board saying we're going to make it a full-time position? Cause I don't want to.
So to meet, well, to meet the, the full-time requirements as far as benefits go, that, that kicks in at thirty hours a week, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
But right now, our town treasurer is twenty hours per week. And I went back all the way to twenty fourteen, did a history, and we haven't had a full-time treasurer. So Steve Eddy was when that, when Joanne's position was town clerk and treasurer. And let me find my notes. Steve came on board in twenty seventeen as an assistant clerk, assistant treasurer. Joanne was still town clerk and treasurer in twenty seventeen. But in twenty eighteen, that's when we made the change, where Steve Eddy became the treasurer and an assistant clerk. And Joanne was on her way out, she became assistant treasurer, and Jesse Pila was the clerk, assistant treasurer. But, so I went back and looked at the history, we've never had a full-time treasurer. And the current treasurer, Heather, is at a maximum of twenty hours per week. So why is the board committed to making treasurer a full-time position when it never has been?
I thought we split the hours between treasurer and assistant treasurer slash assistant clerk.
We had a lot of debate about it, but what we ended up doing was allowing two full-time positions, a full-time clerk and a full-time treasurer, and the treasurer has never been full-time. Why would we start now?
So you're saying like, kind of, you know, if you, you call, you consider the town clerk one FTE?
No, I'm considering the town clerk the twenty hours per week that Heather's.
The treasurer, you mean, the treasurer? I'm, I'm just.
Town clerk is whatever the town clerk is, the thirty-four to forty, whatever.
Yeah, so you call that an FTE for the purposes of, you know, wages and benefits. You're saying like a half FTE for the treasurer and a half FTE for the assistant treasurer slash clerk?
Which is what we were told last week, kinda is running now, but Heather said hers was a maximum of twenty hours per week. So it's not a full-time position. Why are we making it one?
I guess the question we, we have to.
That's a fair characterization though, and I'm sorry to interrupt, Will. I thought we'd agreed last week, total of eighty hours a week for the office administration.
Right, but by, by making it to full-time, a full-time clerk and a full-time treasurer, we've gotten ourselves into the benefits problem now. We've.
But is that true though, if the treasurer component is broken up between approximately twenty hours for the treasurer and twenty hours for the assistant?
I think we need to be clear when someone is running for that position, that it's not a full-time position, that it is a part-time position. And that way there is no expectation of the benefits. Yes, Kathy?
I do not believe a tre, the treasurer can do that job in twenty hours. I do not.
Ask Heather, she does it.
She has an assistant who does.
Yeah, we're not talking about the assistant, Kathy. We're talking just about the treasurer.
Okay, but if you take the assistant away.
We can't take the assistant away. We found out that it's required for Deb's position to have an assistant.
Assistant town clerk.
Yeah, assistant clerk.
Clerk, right. But why, I'm saying, why would we create a full-time position that is not a current full-time position? And why wouldn't we leave it with the assistant the way it is?
But last week I thought, I watched the video, the board agreed that.
I didn't agree.
The board did.
The board did agree that they were going to have the town clerk be thirty-two hours, the treasurer. Thirty-four, that's what she's working. Thirty hours for the treasurer and sixteen hours for the assistant is what was discussed and what you board members asked Heather to put into the budget last week.
Right, and now I'm asking, why are we making the treasurer a full-time position? When I went back through history and it's never been a full-time position. We've always had.
A lot different now than it's ever been.
We've always had an assistant.
The job is different. I know when Jesse was there, Donna was there, Donna was full-time.
I'm not saying she wasn't.
So there was two full-time people that had Jesse.
I'm okay with two full-time people. I don't wanna leave the assistant out. So I want the one full-time and two part-time. The one full-time town clerk, the one part-time treasurer and the one part-time assistant clerk, assistant treasurer.
Okay, but right now Marcel puts in fifteen to twenty hours.
Yeah.
He's doing his.
Let's call it twenty.
Okay, he's doing his delinquent tax collecting. Why? He's also treasurer. If you take that away from the assistant or someone who doesn't have the qualifications to pay, to pay for that, or that has any accounting background or grants management background that Heather has, you need to put a grants management position in there and you might as well plan on paying at least a hundred and fifty dollars. Heather has made this town a lot of money over the years with her grants.
I agree.
Half a million this year, and if she chooses not to run and we don't get a treasurer with the qualifications that we have now, it's not gonna work. You're not gonna get that job in twenty hours. You have payroll that needs to be done by legally, you have bank statements. I worked at my last job, I reconciled twenty-some on bank accounts, and it takes lots of time. You have a credit card account and you have accounts payable. The credit card account can take days to reconcile.
Yeah, and I'm okay with the eighty hours, Kathy. I'm just saying, why instead of two full-times, can't it be the one full-time clerk, the one part-time treasurer and the one part-time?
Cause you're not finding a.
Cause that's still eighty hours. It's still eighty hours.
Hey, hang, hang on a second here. I'm, I'm hearing that the treasure job cannot be done part-time. Is that strictly for this town or is that true of other towns in the state?
No.
So, so.
Barnett has a town clerk treasurer, but he's making a lot more money than.
He's making less money than you.
No, he's not.
Yes, he is.
Not less than me.
I saw the VLCT.
Not less than me?
Yeah, less than you.
So.
I don't think so.
Okay, so here's, here's the thing.
I can tell you what you're making.
Here's the thing.
I know what I made.
Here's the thing, if you, if you take the League of Cities and Towns Compensation and Benefits Survey, which I believe is what you're alluding to, Sue.
Yeah.
And you distill down to other towns our size, right? There's any other way of metrics that you can use to do this? The one I used was plus or minus two hundred people total population. If you distill that down and look at treasures and you look at their hours they work, uh, weekly, for the most part, they're all part-time. Like that kind of windows it down to the town of Shoreham, Marlborough, Townsend, Chelsea, Paulette, Winkin, Waterford, Whittingham and Cabin, all within two hundred people of us. So that's nine towns you, you have for a sample size. All right, you look at, you know, the employment type, you have two of those towns where it's a full-time job and the rest are part-time. Like the town of, uh, the town of Chelsea here, you have twenty hours a week. That's how much the treasurer is working. They're also the tax collector. The town of Townsend, you have them working twenty-two hours a week, they're also the tax collector.
And I have been in Barnett. He is, he started in March of two thousand nine, so he's been doing it for sixteen years. He's making, or reported that he's making thirty-eight sixty-four an hour. For forty hours per week is what is reported in the, in the compensation thing that we looked at.
Okay.
Did you even call him, did you mind out?
It's what he reported.
No, he could probably just tell you exactly what he was making.
It's, it's what was in the VLCT.
I know.
We used it for the road department and now I'm using it for the town.
But you might wanna go to the horses now.
Sure.
Primary source of the best.
But you, but you can also look at the Barnett, you can also look at the Barnett Town Report and see what his total salary is and you can just split that by his hourly rate. It comes out to about the same. He's somewhere in the low eighties.
He has an assistant, he has an assistant treasurer at twenty-five dollars an hour for an average of eighteen point four-three hours per week.
Is she also an assistant? Clerk, clerk?
She may be. It, it was, the category, the title is, is hard and unclear.
This, this was reflected in the compensation? I can, I can pull it up right now. I have it in front of me.
Barnett's assistant is twenty-five dollars an hour for eighteen hours, so that's fifty-eight point four-three hours.
Did Barnett?
But that's beside the point. That's not the point that I'm trying to make here. The point I'm trying to make here is why are we making the treasurer full-time position with thirty hours when it's never been a full-time position?
So I think to reframe it a little bit, what we, what it sounded like we heard last week, you know, everyone in the town office kinda talked about, you know, the roles that they're, that they take on under that umbrella. And I'm wondering if sometime in the past, however many years, there, it seems there's been a lot of stuff dumped on their plate.
Yeah, job creep, I think.
Probably, I, I agree, like Heather, I know you mentioned pulling recordings off the, um, audio recorder to post on YouTube, that.
That doesn't sound like.
That shouldn't be a treasurer function. Someone else should be doing that.
I'm sure they've had job creep, but at the same point, they may come in point for me because they're doing the job. Heather's working twenty hours or less and Marcel's working twenty hours or less, so they're doing the job over those hours.
Marcel and Heather are putting hours in, but work, I can tell you Marcel works more hours than he is paid for.
And Joanne is the same time.
Yeah.
Exactly. Joanne would work.
Yeah, Sunday and many nights and never got paid.
And never got paid.
Exactly.
She went to select board meetings on a regular basis and she.
So she was the secretary for those.
She didn't put in for her time. So.
I would also mention in other towns, road foremen take on the grants management piece in which they write the grants, manage the grants, meet with the funders. And the only thing the town office does is compile the invoices to hand to them so that they can do the reporting.
Right, and when we had a road crew of four people instead of the three, I understand that Lyle did do that.
And it, but it also, from what I understood, when Tim, when you and I went to that select board networking event up in Newport, it sounded like there were a lot of other towns where the board itself, the select board itself was handling grants to a certain degree. I heard a lot, I heard stories from those two selectmen from Lowell that they were working on grants. There was another guy, I think from, uh, I can see his face. Was he from Troy or was he from Barton?
I wasn't paying attention to that part of it. I wasn't aware select board members were doing grants. That, that's a surprise to me.
Well, they should, they should be.
They shouldn't be.
I think they should be involved in looking for them.
And I'm not sure the road foreman that we have has the skills to do the grants. Right now, and also the other thing, Marcel does his delinquent tax collecting as part of the treasurer's job when he's working.
Right.
If that part of the job is eliminated, he'll get the eight percent income that the town is now receiving.
We're not talking about eliminating the assistant, Kathy.
I understand that.
In fact, the way that, the way it was discussed with, with two full-time positions, that does away with the assistant. If we agreed, if the board agreed for eighty hours and each of them were to be full-time forty hours, then there is no assistant. Then that's.
We were talking full-time board.
But I would like to see the one full-time town clerk and the part-time treasurer and the part-time assistant equaling the eighty hours that we agreed on last week.
Is that all this is to you then? Just splitting that out?
Cause what happens is then you only have one health reimbursement instead of two. You have one medical instead of two. Check out those numbers, Tim. They go from eight to four and from fifty-eight to, you know, less than thirty. Um, and the, if, if Deb and Heather were to be re-elected and it stays the same, then we padded the budget without.
We could, we could amend the budget. That, that their election will take place.
We could, but are we hiring a full-time treasurer? Cause if you're hiring a full-time treasurer, there might be people come out of the woodwork that are interested in a full-time position with medical benefits.
Uh, I gotta go, go back. Not that I really wanna go back.
I know. I'm sorry.
But when you were talking about there was, when Joanne was there, there was, she was town clerk and town treasurer and had an assistant town clerk and town treasurer.
Yes, she did. In twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen.
Were those, is that two full-time positions?
Yes.
The two assistants were full-time?
No, there was one assistant.
Yeah.
Twenty fourteen through twenty sixteen. Jesse was making, in twenty sixteen, she made eighteen thousand dollars to Joanne's forty-one thousand. So that office was fifty-nine thousand in twenty sixteen.
Eighteen thousand, even at those rates, that seems, even if that was getting paid minimum wage, that seems low for a full-time.
Maybe it wasn't quite full-time. Well, the, um, it's not full-time because the office was still only four days a week then. Deb says hers is thirty-four hours.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm referring to the assistant. If the assistant's getting paid eighteen thousand, I don't, you're referring to Sharon pay, Sharon here, right?
No, no, I started in twenty fourteen, so Sharon was gone that year.
Okay, so this is, this is the Joanne and Jesse.
I only went back there eleven years. And then in twenty seventeen, Steve Eddy came on board as an assistant treasurer, assistant clerk. So they realized at that time they needed more help and you and I were discussing, something happened in twenty seventeen. The road budget was huge, something massive was going on.
There must have been, and I, I could look back and maybe find it, but.
Know if he was here.
I, I don't know what happened in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, but there was a massive spike in the highway budget as well. Um, not quite as large as it was in twenty eleven, twenty twelve during the May flooding in that year and Hurricane Irene. But, so I, I'm not, I'm not sure what all went down there. I don't know if there was FEMA grants that had to be done. There was FEMA collaboration that had to go in.
Maybe.
Um, I, that, that's speculation. So I, I, I get, I get, I guess, I, 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 what I'm hearing your point to be here, Sue, is how we break out the, the roles of each person, how we break out the roles of the treasurer and how we break out roles of the assistant treasurer. That seems to be like it would be the determining factor in how many hours and whether it's warranted as a full-time position or not.
But if we agree that eighty hours is right for the three of them, but the treasurer is twenty hours, which, which is what Heather has now, is the twenty hours. Um, that's not a full-time position and we wouldn't have to count it as such. Is all I'm saying. I'm just saying, is the board making the treasurer, which has never been a full-time position, is it making it one now? I, I would vote no to not make it a full-time.
I thought that's what we're all saying though. It's not a full-time position. There's an assistant treasurer slash clerk.
That's not what's in the budget, Tim.
So you, you're, you're saying though, in the, back in the salaries, or not the salaries, the health insurance line item, you're referring to the, the fifty-eight thousand number as comprising.
Take benefits. She's a part-time employee, not a full-time employee.
You're, you're, but you're saying essentially that the fifty, yeah, the fifty-eight thousand, three sixty-eight number.
Three six eight would be half that number. Life and disability would be half that number. Dental insurance would be half. So it would be half of all those benefits. Uh, not, yeah, retirement as well. So seventy-six, instead of seventy-six thousand, five hundred forty-five, if we had one full-time and two part-time, which is the exact situation we're in now, I'm not asking for a change. which is the exact situation we're in now, I'm not asking for change. I'm asking to continue the practice that we're doing now. That would be thirty-seven thousand dollars that we could eliminate this evening. Because there would only be one full-time position and that would be Deb's, the town clerk position.
So even if it came to a worst-case scenario that the budget remained as it is on the screen right now, doesn't this budget imply that the funds budgeted are used for the purposes as outlined here? So it's not, if I'm understanding my thoughts correctly.
What you're saying in this budget is we have two full-time people.
Could you let him finish? So if it turns out Heather runs and is re-elected and it's the twenty hours, whatever she's doing, and we have the assistant treasurer slash assistant clerk and Deb's got her, what, thirty-two hours or thirty-four hours? And the budget's a little fat because of the health and disability and dental payments, whatever we've got on the screen there. Then isn't there just a surplus in the budget because we're not gonna need to touch that specifically identified line item in the way that it's outlined here?
But you're sending a signal that it's a full-time position, people may be more interested in a full-time position.
Not, it depends on who runs and I think you need to put that in there. And it can be adjusted the night of town meeting to whoever runs for town clerk and for treasurer who get elected. You're, it's there in there, you explain it to the people who are voting. And it can be adjusted in the bottom line before the budget is voted on.
Sure, Kathy, but I'm gonna ask the board for like the fifth time, sixth time, are you changing the current town treasurer position, which is currently part-time and has always been part-time, to a full-time position, and that's what I'm asking you guys.
Can I just ask a question? So when Donna worked and Jessie worked, they were two full-time positions, they both worked forty hours.
But the treasurer was part-time, the town clerk was part-time.
They both worked forty hours, that's eighty hours.
They did.
We both.
I don't see a situation of us going back to two people. We can't because the town says, you gotta be, well, look at Deb. We could have a town clerk who is the assistant treasurer, Deb would have to take on the role of assistant treasurer. And you could have a treasurer who's the assistant town clerk, the treasurer would have to take on the role of town clerk.
And Deb doesn't have time for that.
So I'm not proposing a change to the current structure. I'm asking if the select board is trying to change it to two full-time positions.
I thought we just unanimously said, no, we're not.
Well, vote on it then, because I keep hearing, yes, it is two full-time positions. If it's not full-time, two full-time positions, then we can throw away with one of the full-time benefits.
I don't think, can we set the constraint on whether or not it is a full-time position? We essentially do that with the budget, we don't have the ability to control their hours, but we can control that per se with the budget. So I guess what you're asking is whether or not we're gonna commit to budgeting for two FTEs in the town office. Which.
You're changing, you're, we're changing the structure that we have.
With, with this current budget is what you're saying.
Is the issue in your mind, we just need another line item in the budget to, to specify out the assistant treasurer slash assistant clerk?
No.
Or can we not even do that?
No, 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 the issue here is that this is, this, but this section right here, this payroll benefits and taxes section is presuming that we have a full-time town clerk and a full-time treasurer.
Right.
So if we don't have a full-time treasurer, which it seems like that's what we're agreeing here, right? The treasurer position isn't full-time, it's been twenty hours a week, then we would, and and where would this medical insurance number fifty-eight thousand come from? Because that's comprised of two, uh, couples' insurance plans. That, that's what we're discussing. And I, I, I kinda get Sue's point and I, I agree, I don't know why we would budget for this if it's not gonna be a full-time employee, even regardless of who's elected, it wouldn't be a full-time employee. So if we put it in the budget here, then once it gets voted on at town meeting, it's essentially in the budget to be expended.
It's also in the budget reflecting that it's not a full-time position.
Where, say, I'm sorry.
If we, if we pass this budget.
Yeah.
It looks like there's a full-time town clerk and a full-time treasurer, but that's a new structure from what we've ever had. We've only ever had a part-time treasurer.
Okay, how does the rest of the board feel? I mean, we, we, we know how. What does it look like from last year? I guess I'd like to know.
So, so you, you're seeing last year down there in the, in the, as far as the health insurance? You're seeing that in the, the leftmost column, that's the thirty-five hundred number because none of them were taking, they were, they either weren't all full-time and none of them were taking.
Full-time.
Yeah, she doesn't take medical insurance.
So it goes from thirty-five hundred to seventy-six thousand. And I understand it needing to go up by one person because we don't know that Deb will win her election, we hope that she will, we don't know that she will. That has to be changed to reflect one full-time person.
Regardless of whether or not she does win her election, she could still elect to take.
Oh, true.
Sure.
That is her right to do that. I'm just saying, this reflects two full-time and I don't know that we wanna change the structure of the town government.
So, so what happens if the treasurer goes to twenty hours, gets elected and can't fulfill the job in twenty hours and comes to the board and asks that they be at forty hours? Then what are you going to do? Where are you gonna come up with the money? How is the work going to get done if you don't budget it now?
So you're saying to budget for incompetence?
I do.
I don't want to do that.
You can, because right now Marcel and Heather's hours combined are forty hours.
Yes, I understand that.
Yes.
At a new treasurer, I don't know that we'd still have Marcel, but we still have Marcel's position.
And you won't, how do you know you're gonna have a person at twenty hours, if Heather doesn't run, that can do all the treasurer's work that Marcel and Heather do now? Including grants management, you do not have anything in there in your salaries for a grants manager person and you might as well budget it at a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. And they aren't gonna do it in ten hours a week, I can assure you.
Well, in a not, in a year when there's no FEMA things going down, a grant manager would probably just be handling the occasional grant that comes out of the state funds or from the federal government. How many grants is that a year? Okay, so five grants, like what are, what are other towns paying for grant administration? The town of Barnett uses Cynthia Stewart, I know, for their grant management, let me pull up their town report right here.
Well, I don't.
I think you're being unreasonable.
Yeah.
I don't see how this is unreasonable.
I think it's being unreasonable to put that treasurer at twenty hours, I think it's unreasonable.
It's what it currently is, it currently is that, that's the structure right now.
I understand that.
We're making a change to that structure.
An assistant clerk who has zero accounting, how are you going to get the position done? How are you gonna get them to do the payroll? How are you gonna get them to do the bank reconciliation? How are you gonna get the grants management done and all the other stuff? Even if you don't have a grants manager, how are you gonna get the assistant work done for the treasurer? If you don't have an assistant that has accounting background and it's not gonna work? And I can tell you, an assistant probably will, will not come to work for less than thirty to thirty-five dollars an hour. That if you have one that has.
Paying more than that now, so if that is the situation, then you'll be fine.
If they have accounting background, if they don't have accounting background, what are you gonna do? What are you going to do?
Yeah, you could, you could have a, a treasurer elected who would need to work.
Forty hours.
Or thirty hours, you know, because, because they might not be able to find a, an assistant treasurer, clerk that, may, maybe they find somebody who doesn't have the experience or the time for that.
Exactly.
Sue, you're gonna let the budget increase to get a full-time treasurer?
It looks more like a contingency plan, it's not necessarily gonna be that way.
No, I don't think it's, I think we're, frankly, I think we're arguing about something that's not gonna come to pass. As in, are we buying trouble here with this, this whole discussion or argument?
We're hoping it stays the same.
But if you continue to fight and argue about it.
No one's, no one's fighting.
Get a bike, or we're gonna get a vote about whether or not we're changing the structure to, to full-time or if we're keeping it at the one full-time and two part-time?
We're not changing the structure, we're just budgeting. This is, this isn't, it could change the structure, but it doesn't necessarily change the structure. It's a budgeting, as if the structure has changed. As a contingency in case that's what happens, but. I don't, Wade, you've been.
What's, yeah, I'm taking it all in, right? Well, you mentioned an amendment the night of town meeting.
Yep.
I don't know anything about that, is there anything you could share there?
Well, if the elections take place before the budget is voted on.
Which they do.
So if the, if Heather chooses to run and is re-elected and Deb chooses to run and is re-elected, then we still, I was thinking we could eliminate both of the insurances. But, 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 yeah, it, it, we probably shouldn't, we, even if those two were elected, we probably should leave one. One insurance in there in case, in case Deb, um, elects to take.
Finds herself a position where she needs help insurance.
Right, exactly. But, but you could, when it came to the budget, you could, uh, reduce, you, you could amend the budget amount or change it, revise it, whatever, however you wanna call it to eliminate one health and, you know, the, the benefits, one benefit package. And maybe some hours of, of, um, time too. Because you don't currently work eighty total, correct? So that could be done, uh, and we could, and I'm sure Heather could come up with that number for us and be prepared to give us that number so that we're prepared for that if we wanted to do that. If, you know, assuming they're re-elected.
So from what we, from what we heard from Marcel a minute ago was this fifty-eight three sixty-eight number is two, uh, couples' life, uh, health insurance plans.
Couples or family?
Couples, it was couples.
Employee and spouse.
Yes, so if that fifty-eight thousand three sixty-eight number divide that by two, that's what? Twenty-nine one eighty-four?
That's enough.
Really, all you have to do is divide the seventy-six five four five seventy-two by two.
Is that true though? Because the retirement.
No.
No, that's.
Retirement contribution is generated based on payroll, correct? That's a percentage of payroll? Yeah, so that wouldn't, that wouldn't quite be.
I don't think we offer retirement as a benefit to.
To full-time employees.
To part-time.
But.
That's true, so you could eliminate one position if the treasurer and the assisting, the treasurer gets re-elected. You could eliminate that one.
The benefits for that position.
Benefit for that one person and still keep Deb's.
But my point is to not budget for it in first place by saying that the treasurer is not a full-time position.
Yeah, so essentially tonight.
Also reduce the number of people that run for that position.
So in practice, how that would work tonight is someone would make a motion to say, reduce the medical line item to twenty-nine one eighty-four, reduce the H, the health reimbursement number to four thousand. And that would be the way we do that, right?
Reduce them all. Reduce them all by half. There aren't, i- if you have one full-time and two part-time as opposed to two full-time, only one person gets those benefits.
Let me just run through the logistics here, let's say we do exactly as you're saying, Sue. And then, uh, worst-case scenario on town meeting day and we've got new.
A new clerk.
New treasurer. Then we're gonna have to readjust the budget.
Anyways.
Why? I'm saying that the treasurer position isn't full-time, it's twenty hours per week. Which makes it by definition not full-time.
But last week you just said the treasurer position was gonna be thirty hours, why?
Thirty-four.
The treasurer was going to be thirty hours and the clerk was gonna be thirty-four. It, that is what you discussed and you agree and that's what you told Heather to propose the budget be. And those were the figures.
So we had a week to do more research and at the past and find out that the treasurer position was never full-time, it's always been a part-time position.
Well, I don't, I don't think that's true.
Well, I went back to twenty fourteen.
Because they were, as, they were town clerk and treasurer and assistant town clerk and treasurer.
Yes.
So between the two of them.
Yes.
You had two full-time.
And I'm not changing the structure at all by saying one full-time, two part-times. I'm just not saying two full-times and a little piece for assistant because Deb is required by law to have one. I'm saying keep the structure the same as it is now, one full-time, two part-times.
Thirty hours considered full-time?
Yes.
As far as the insurance.
I think you're gonna have to part-time from somebody for twenty hours to do that job.
Let's, let's, I think we've beefed this up enough, can we make some sort of decision?
I'll make a motion to take the health, health reimbursement line item down to four thousand, the medical item, not, health insurance item down to twenty-nine thousand one eighty-four. And then I'm just gonna leave the rest be, just cuz I'm, I'm still shaky on this retirement number.
There, we don't offer retirement benefits for part-time.
So then where, but then why is the number nine, nine thousand and nine, is that the accumulated? Is that equally accumulated between the two FTEs?
Based on their salaries and the treasurer's salary is a lot higher.
That FEMA's requires from the town to pay for retirement goes up every year.
Okay.
I don't know the percentages.
Yeah.
It's like six and a quarter, it goes to six seventy-five or something like that.
But we don't currently pay retirement for anyone other than Deb and I'm just saying keep that the same, one full-time person.
Yeah, we just, he, he doesn't, I think Will was saying he didn't know how much to reduce.
I'm not sure how much to reduce it and I'm not sure it would matter some section.
Heather, if we were to have one full-time person, it would be half of the seventy-six five four five seventy-two, correct?
Give or take.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. So, uh, did we have a?
So Will, you made the motion to do, to reduce.
To reduce.
Payroll benefits and taxes by half, to have one full-time equivalent.
No, so the, the motion I made was to reduce the health reimbursement by half and the health insurance by half. But I'm, I'm amenable to reduce the whole thing by half, if that's a friendly amendment that you're proposing, I'll move that.
And I would second that.
I would, I would strongly suggest that the board consider leaving the budget the way that it is because the, the work in that office is not going to get done the way that you think it is, we have a part-time position.
So.
But you're a part-time position.
And I have Marcel. And I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but the scenario you keep saying was it was two full-time people with benefits.
Right.
And then Donna was there also.
Who was, who was the second full-time person?
Steve.
Steve, okay, so we're, so we're talking in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
He wa, he was.
They were full-time.
Steve was full-time at thirty-eight thousand?
That, that I could see, that's more, that's more feasible than the eighteen thousand.
I'm telling you, this has absolutely nothing to do with the people that are in the office right now. It's about the workload and the way the office needs to operate.
And you don't take into consideration, when you're using. And you don't take into consideration when you're using five-year-old rates as to what the rates today are. On what you're paying.
I use last year's, the previous year's, twenty, I use them all.
You're also talking about an office staff ten years ago. I mean, things have changed a lot.
In, in, in what, in what way? Can, can you just enlighten us like, and as far as the day-to-day workload? Cause the, the treasurer's job is laid out in state statute is essentially payroll balancing accounts.
Come visit one day.
I'm, I'm, I'm asking, I'm asking you now, what, what, what is, what has changed from that? Because last meeting you said that you had other things you did, like you mentioned the, um, the thing with the YouTube accountant.
And why do you think that I took that on? Just out of curiosity.
I, I don't know. It doesn't seem like it should be a role for the treasurer.
Correct, but there was no one else to do it.
Okay, so.
So I took it on so that the town would be in compliance.
So in a, in an ideal world, one, who would be doing that and who, who could feasibly do that? What role should that fall under?
And then you would, then you would be hiring yet another person.
Yep.
To come in and work, what, an hour or two a week? Who are you gonna find to fill that?
Or, or you lump it into a different role, right? Like you, like you have the board administrator, you have the, um.
So you don't go if she wants more out?
No, or you have a, you know, a different, you know, kind of assistant. Again, this is talking theoretically and restructuring. And I don't think that's gonna be feasible tonight, but long-term, this might be, you know, the solution. Instead of this job creep that you keep experiencing, you know. Perhaps we should create a position involving somehow a board administrator and putting them in charge of doing all that. Because if you task that out to someone who's an assistant, they're making less of an hourly rate. And so that saves the town money and then it also gives you more time to handle the responsibilities of the job that's laid out for you in statute. Gives you more time to do your job essentially. That's, that's what I'm getting at here.
Okay, when, uh, did we go from a four-man, four-person road crew to three-person?
Twenty twenty-two.
And we apparently went.
Twenty twenty-two.
So I just received a text from, uh, Jim. He believes that we went to a four-person road crew in twenty seventeen. Which is why that spike in the highway department came in there.
That could be. No, no, that, this, I've been looking at the salaries of.
Yeah.
Of the office people.
Yeah, but again, that, remember we were speculating about whether it was a FEMA event, yeah. So that could have, that could have been the source of it.
Okay, we, we have a motion. Maybe instead of discussing it further, does, is more discussion needed or can we get to a vote? Cause it seems like we're just saying the same things over and over again. If there is no more discussion, all those in favor of the.
Will, do you read the motion again?
So the motion was to reduce the payroll benefits and taxes line item to seventy-six, five forty, five seventy-two by half.
Thank you.
All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay. Wait, I didn't hear what you said.
I said nay, he said nay.
I do have one question about. If though.
You'll have to, what are you looking at? I'm sorry.
That dental insurance.
Yes.
Why is there a number in there for dental insurance?
Well, because this is just for the town office and no one takes dental insurance at this moment.
Yeah, but, oh, never mind, never mind. Lost my head. I was thinking vision. I was thinking vision, lost my head.
Guess you need vision.
So.
Yeah, I do.
The highway department, hold on, let me make it smaller for you. So once again, you're looking at twenty-five budget year-to-date remaining proposed. So with the increases that I received, um, by email. The, um, salary line item goes up to one ninety, ninety-one, twenty. Um, we took, uh, an average based on new salary amounts for overtime wages. The rest of the budget, um, was built. Um, so that's what construction and maintenance. I did fix a few. So this one I have a question about. I went back historically and the last two years we've spent between thirty-six and thirty-seven thousand. So I was questioning why seventy thousand was in the budget.
Mm-hmm. I, I do too and it, and going back, that's just kind of the way it's been the last two budget cycles. It was projected seventy thousand in twenty twenty-four and seventy thousand again in twenty twenty-five.
I would suggest reducing that to forty thousand.
Yeah.
That was a thought I had, um.
Is that because of crushing within there either?
No, that's just.
Gas, oil and diesel.
Gas, oil and diesel. So the two, the two thoughts I had about this item were, um. You have to consider utilization of the equipment when the last two years we've had, uh. You know, three, call it two and a half people operating in that department. So that you can't have, like, the trucks are getting used less.
That's true.
So the, the only hesitation I would have about the forty thousand numbers is it's slightly too low. I would go fifty because if you go back to fiscal year.
Person driving more.
So if you go back to fiscal year twenty twenty-three, right? And you had, you had a spike there in the actual, the sixty-one thousand, which I'm not sure where that came from. I don't know if that was reactionary market stuff to the war in Ukraine. But that would just put, fit a little more padding in there just in case. That way we don't risk going over that line item. I could also be amenable to forty-five thousand, but I, I do agree the seventy thousand number stood out to me as kind of abnormally high. Considering what our actuals have been in the last three years and even the first year, uh, the year before it was projected to seventy thousand, it only went up to sixty-two thousand.
So that is not just gas for the vehicles. That is the big tank that's outside. There's two large deliveries a year.
Mm-hmm.
So I believe that forty thousand is an appropriate number.
So the, the big tank you're referring to contains diesel or? Okay.
So the only vehicle that is now filled up that petty code is the one ton. The rest is filled up with the diesel tank.
Okay.
And there are two large deliveries a year.
So you think the forty is?
I do.
Is okay?
I do.
Okay.
Um, the other question I have is it seems that the maintenance on the equipment, um, is overspent in just about every category. Yet it's, uh, budgeted at a very low amount. And so I'm wondering what the, um, thought process was behind those numbers.
So essentially that's, the, that, those numbers, what I have for, uh. Twenty twenty-six proposed, if you go, if you go back through the years, that's just kind of what was always done. It was always budgeted very low, very rough estimate. Like you go back to twenty twenty-one projected, which would have been done in twenty twenty. We were projecting thirty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred for trucks two and three, twelve fifty for truck four, fifty-one for truck six, forty-four for truck seven. It's, it looks like it's just kind of been pasted in there.
Okay, so I understand about projections and how to build budgets. What I'm looking at is actual expenses.
That was not an attack on you. I'm just.
Freight liner had twenty-one thousand dollars worth of repairs this year, yet the budget for next year is five thousand. So is that number realistic?
So, well, here's what we, you know. There, there, I mean, repairs, it's, it's hard to project what goes, you know, broken. We could increase each of those by an additional five thousand. Cause if you look at, you know, what those totals came out to be, average, you know, trucks one through seven. That comes out to probably somewhere around eight thousand, I would have to say, just looking at that roughly.
The only way they're close to budget this year is because the gas, oil and diesel was so overblown. Because they're thirty thousand over in repairs.
Well, can you walk me through the logic of, um, lowballing vehicle maintenance?
Right, I, I'd like to see those numbers higher, I think.
I, I kind of agree and this is just, again, the way it was always done, which as we know, can get us into trouble, so.
What's the logic of the way it's always been done? I don't understand that.
I don't either. I, this is my, my first year on the board and I can't, I can't explain it. So I don't know if it's just, you know, I hate, I hate to put adjectives on it. I don't know if it's lazy budgeting or if, you know.
Up the freight liner to ten and the Western Star to ten.
If you start doing it truck by truck, um, you get into the.
Yeah.
You get into the danger.
You just had a big repair. It might not need.
It might not need more. You don't know exactly what's gonna happen. Like we did spend a lot of money on truck three, cause that's getting old. But are we gonna have to spend that much money going forward?
So what do you do here? Can you, uh, create a line item for vehicle maintenance slush fund? And otherwise keep it low and just use the funds where the need is?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Heather, but it makes more sense to break it out truck by truck. One, because it makes it easier to track from a accounts payable perspective, but also it helps for analyzing historical trends.
So it's allocated by vehicle because timesheets show what vehicles are used. So you can do a comparison on how the vehicle is used versus what the expense is.
Alright, so there's no slush fund for vehicle maintenance?
Um, no, I typically advocate for slush funds not to exist.
Yeah, that's kind, I don't, I don't.
Terminology or?
It's just, so a budget is a guardrail.
Yeah.
And so if you're saying the freight liner had twenty-one thousand this year, but we don't think it's gonna have anything more than five thousand next year, then great. But I think that those numbers aren't realistic. I wasn't involved in the highway department budget building, so I don't know what the thought process was.
So again, I, if we wanna be safe, I say we increase each of those by two thousand.
You're saying increase the five thousand?
Yeah, increase each of those from five thousand to seven thousand.
And if one particular truck doesn't need the maintenance, then what's, what's that effect on the budget? Lucky us?
Kind of. I mean, again, it, it's really hard, it's really hard to predict with vehicles how much repairs you're gonna need.
Use more.
Well, that's exactly what I'm getting at. So if we just poured a bunch of money into one of the vehicles, the money would be there in the budget to cover another if necessary?
You could move them from line to line if you needed to.
That's sort of what I'm getting at.
If you had them there, you could, even if you put seven thousand on one and you only use three, you needed to, you had that money there. You just move it from line to line. My question, if you're gonna do the ones on the bottom by two, what about Jimmy's truck, the two thousand? You've got two thousand there, he spent nineteen hundred. You've got two thousand there. If he were to put trucks on that, tires on that truck. He would have spent more than two thousand dollars on those trucks. It's a thousand dollars to put on a vehicle. I think you need to increase that. If he were to have something break down, I don't think two thousand is being reasonable on that vehicle either.
I have no sense of how to budget for truck maintenance.
It's, you, the way Jim describes it, it's difficult because you don't know what's gonna break when. You can guess based on age of vehicle, but a hydraulic line could bust a, you know, something could ru, a part could rust out.
Oh, I get that. And I know it's expensive.
Exactly.
You don't expect that to happen then?
Yeah, it wasn't really ready, which the line items are.
The grader looks like at nine thousand dollars repairs this year and we're only budgeting four, right?
So again, if, if, well, if you look at, uh, years past. Yeah, that item might be a little low historically, but again, that was budgeted at four thousand back in twenty twenty-one. And only thirty-six eighty-eight was expended and then it was budgeted four thousand again the next year, only two thousand ninety-eight was expended. At the end of the day, you, you have this kind of bucket, right, in the budget of the equipment maintenance category. Uh, that's, that was at a hundred and seven last year. If we, if you take the gas, oil and diesel number down thirty thousand, you're at seventy-three, five hundred. Were essentially.
But they spent to the whole budget.
They did, so.
So with that diesel money being reduced, I think they're gonna be short on maintenance.
Yeah, so perhaps we increase by that adequate amount.
Why is the water truck zero?
The wa, that water truck isn't used anymore.
Even though it had twenty-seven hundred dollars in repairs.
Uh, that, that was an incidental to just kind of get it in, to fi, fix a problem it had and now it's in storage. It's in the garage in storage. He doesn't anticipate using that again and he is contemplating. Yes, exactly.
So what is the number we're looking at?
Well, I, I would have to think the total equipment maintenance number. If you had it budgeted at one oh seven last year, I don't see a reason to decrease it this year, so.
Our actual so far, one oh three?
One oh three. So we're, we're on pace to get there, um, cause I know Jim had, uh, a truck blow a major hydraulic line and he's having problems with the loader right now. So we're gonna probably be getting bills for that at some point.
What's the loader? And make that like ten thousand. That's the one he's having problems with, the loader?
Well, yeah, so that's, that's the one that's having issues right now. Um, if you. Let's see here.
Although that's.
The grader is.
That's not likely to have.
Although it really isn't, doesn't make you. Doesn't make a great deal of difference. You've got the money in the total equipment maintenance budget. It doesn't, doesn't really matter which line item it is, does it?
That's, that's kind of what I'm getting at. It's, it seems like the budget was padded in certain line items to then potentially account for shortfalls and others. That's the way it was done. If, you know, I agree with Heather's logic on reducing the gas, oil and diesel. So then if we're gonna take that down thirty thousand, we should put that thirty thousand back in. To all the other categories because the spending to actual is pretty much on track.
Bump the grader up to ten thousand. That'll give us another six and then we're twenty thousand dollars different from last year's budget. Oh, those are all ten. That's the twenty thousand right there.
Yep.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Want me to do a question?
Sorry. Did you have a question?
Uh, well, not, not under the equipment thing, it's like, but I noticed at the bottom of that, why, the one you're saying.
That's because there was a bill from twenty-four that came in the first month of twenty-five.
Oh, okay.
So.
So the previous year must have underran.
We're cash accounting, so you pay the bill in when it comes in.
Okay.
Forty-eight thousand is a good number for the coming year?
Yeah, I think that's what he has a contract for that.
Yeah.
Uh, Ron, did you have any other questions in that?
The.
That's gone up forty-seven thousand dollars. Where did it go up so big? Let's see, gravel and stone, there it is.
I believe that that's for potential crushing?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So it's put at seventy-five thousand for.
That's what.
For new crushing budget?
Mm-hmm.
Right, because you have the same scenario. A, a bill came in in January that was for twenty-four.
Yeah.
But I believe the seventy-five was what they thought would be the cost for this year with crushing.
Okay.
That's, the crushing's for a two-year supply?
Yes, it's usually, yes, it's usually done every other year.
The flooding took a lot more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so highway garage, um, the only question I had was in the operating supplies. It seems that that line item is over budget this year, but there's a lower number budgeted for next year.
This, I'm sorry, this is in which item?
Operating supplies?
Yes.
What were the operating supplies?
So the operating supplies, let me go down to this. Uh, I don't. So historically, that one was quite high, like in years past in twenty twenty-one was twenty-four thousand. And twenty twenty-two went down to twenty thousand. So it seems like that number just keeps decreasing. I'm not, I'm not really sure why, but in twenty twenty-four, we expended eleven thousand thirteen fifty-eight. Oh, that's. Oh, that's that's jumped up. Uh. That's an excellent question, cuz when I was looking at the um. The year, cuz all I had was the year-to-date as of September thirtieth going into this meeting, and that had us at ten thousand nine hundred and eight.
What kind of supplies are they, what?
So that. That one's kind of a catch-all for like tools and stuff.
So.
So my question is fifteen seven realistic or does it need to be higher?
Hopefully by running over budget this year, maybe he got slacked up on some things.
That that would be a hope. Um.
I'm happy to leave.
Jim Jim said, Jim Jim just texted me, he said that was unforeseen expenses in that operating supplies line. So. And again, overall, you look at different buckets within. You know, like we looked at total equipment maintenance. If we look at the overall highway garage number, you have. Uh, repairs and maintenance.
Yeah.
That was low. So that, again, that's kind of the repairs and maintenance to the building.
Right, and we were supposed to do the big project this year.
Well, that's not necessarily what that was for. That number's been at twenty five thousand dollars forever.
Okay.
Um, I say forever, it was fifteen hundred in twenty twenty one projected, then in twenty twenty one. Or twenty twenty two projected went up to twenty five thousand, so I'm not sure if, again, we were discussing last time, that was the. Intended that the surplus of whatever that line item is goes to the town garage.
So the year that I was appointed. There was a conversation at the church with many people in the audience. About the highway department garage and the need for repairs, and I believe Morris Shalou. Asked for twenty five thousand in that line item and it was accepted, and it has been there with the thought. That money from that line item at the end of each year would go into the reserve account for repairs and maintenance of that building. Has it? It has, oh. Good.
Is that the same reserve account we were talking about earlier tonight?
Well, last night, you mean. Last last night, last meeting, Tim.
Oh, alright.
Cuz in twenty twenty three, like the twenty twenty three fiscal year budget, you it was. Set at twenty five thousand and all twenty five thousand was used. I'm not, is that a reflection of that surplus then going into that? Okay.
Okay, so are we comfortable with the fifteen seven number or would we like to increase it?
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Everybody else?
Yeah.
I have no way to know.
Um, okay, so I did increase the insurance um number for. The um vehicles in building because that's the real number. Um, and then there's also the insurance management fee um that's in there. Uh, the lease payments I spoke about last time, those reflect actual costs. With truck six being paid off um this year, and truck seven only having forty nine hundred, which will be paid off this year. Um, but did we talk about um the capital fund for vehicles?
It's in the bottom.
It's in the bottom.
Um, so payroll and benefits. Um, actual numbers for dental health reimbursement, like disability. Um. I put the employee sign-on bonus in there. Um, there is still a conversation about a retirement settlement and whether that number.
I don't think the employee, we talked about this, an executive, I don't think the employee sign-on bonus, which was uh leave. Needs to be in there because you've calculated an annual uh payroll. So.
So that number is not. Well, that number's not in your payroll number right now, it's separated up.
But if we pay fifty two weeks times forty hours a week, plus whatever overtime, we have a calculation. And we don't need to count that as extra because it's already in the calculation for payroll.
You're you're saying because.
I'm saying because instead of working.
It's vacation time.
Vacation time.
Yeah.
But isn't it an additional amount of vacation time than what is in the personnel policy?
It is, but he won't be working, so he won't be getting his work pay when he's getting his vacation pay, so it's a wash. True? We talked about this.
That would be my understanding.
I brought it up last week, Heather, because you had said something about you base their salaries on forty hours, what's your suggestion? Fifty two weeks.
Fifty two weeks.
So I was like, well, we're already paying.
He can't work and take vacation at the same time.
Okay, but so so let's just say, wait, what you're saying, so somebody's working. Forty hours a week, fifty two weeks, and they're accruing forty hours of vacation time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's their benefit, but you're giving him an additional benefit of an additional forty hours a week, so that's eighty hours.
He still can only be paid forty hours, fifty two weeks.
Right.
That doesn't change.
Okay, so one more time, okay? A person works forty hours a week for fifty two weeks and accrues forty hours of vacation time. Okay, that's their regular benefit. But you're saying there's an additional forty hours of vacation time, so that's eighty hours of vacation time. So that's two sets of dollar amounts.
So are you saying that you took eighty hours out of the. Fifty two weeks, the two thousand eighty hours for the year? Well, it was a bonus though, isn't it? Isn't that the whole point?
Bonus in addition to.
Yeah, I'm seeing Heather's point.
But you can't be paid for it twice.
No, it was a bonus though, so it is extra paid.
You are paid twice more if it's a bonus.
Yep.
The payroll, the payroll and benefits accrues forty hours.
Yeah.
And you're doing an additional forty hours.
No, I'm on board with Heather, I see this.
But you.
But what what I'm asking is, are are you, when you're calculating under wages, are you? Are you calculating for that employee? Fifty weeks of.
Working.
Working and two weeks of vacation? I think the question is moot though, because uh the employee is going to do the work and he's gonna get his. Forty hours of vacation, but we bargained to give him an additional forty hour. Bonus.
Time off.
Time off.
Time off.
Hate time off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Big time off.
In addition, he's not gonna work that week.
It doesn't matter, it's still gotta come out of the budget.
Still getting paid for it.
Yes.
Yes, but you don't, you're not paying him twice. Fifty three weeks is the way my math works on that.
No, the math's just not math.
The math, okay, so are you, okay? Is there a way I should say it? I don't know how else to say it.
I don't know, because cuz I understand exactly what you're saying. Cuz the twelve hundred is just, is just the extra forty hours.
Forty hours for three people?
No.
One person.
And so, but it's an extra forty hours that only gets paid out if he takes vacation.
He's not gonna work.
So.
He wants to work.
Like, there's, he's either working or he's on vacation. Let's ignore sick leave for a second. He's either working or he's on vacation. When he's working, he's getting paid his regular hourly rate.
And accruing vacation, accruing the regular vacation.
Okay, so then he's accruing the vacation, so then when he uses, when he's not working, he's still getting paid his hourly rate if he's using. His vacation time. So the ultimate amount that gets paid out to him in cash.
Is eighty hours of vacation time, is eighty, cuz the full forty hours of vacation time is just a bonus. You just add it on, it doesn't matter whether he worked or not.
But he, but per the personnel policy, there's rules on whether, how you can roll it over and accrue it, like you can't get paid out for vacation time once you. Leave.
Yeah, but the, does personnel policy have a, have the uh, have has have a statement in there for bonuses? It it's not a bonus, it's paid time off.
But it's still an additional week, so you're paying him for fifty three weeks.
No, we're not.
We're not, we're still gonna pay him for fifty two.
We're giving him the option to.
Fifty weeks of work and two weeks of vacation. Not, not fifty.
Vacation and eighty hours.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so he accrues forty hours as part of benefits, and then forty hours in addition to.
So that he works fifty and his vacation for two, instead of working fifty two and vacation for fifty two, which would be fifty four. No. Oh my gosh.
I don't know, I don't know how else to say it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, neither do we.
I I I don't know how else. The forty hours is accrued through working your normal hours.
Mm-hmm.
I was understood that there was an additional forty hours given as a sign-on bonus.
Mm-hmm.
That's eighty hours of vacation time.
Mm-hmm.
So forty hours is reflected in your benefits, in your in your payroll. And the additional forty hours has to be reflected somewhere. Where do you want it to?
Well, I thought you were using under wages, under salaries. I thought your formula was fifty two weeks.
Which is forty hours of vacation time. If you are giving an additional forty hours, that's eighty hours. And that's what it's worth.
It's still not, it's not fifty three weeks in a year. You either work or you take time off.
We're we're, I guess what we're confused about is is this twelve hundred reflecting money that the town is going to spend?
Yes.
But it's only spent if the vacation is realized, if, in other words, if the vacation is taken. And you can either.
It's a sign-on bonus.
It's a sign-on bonus.
So it's not vacation, it's a sign-on bonus.
But it's it's in the form of vacation, the sign-on bonus wasn't cash. The sign-on bonus was vacation time, it wasn't in the form of cash.
It's forty hours.
Hours of vacation in a year.
Yeah.
Am I incorrect?
It's eighty hours of vacation in the first year, but which means he'll only work fifty, he's not working fifty one hours. Uh, fifty one weeks. And and getting an extra weeks' worth of. Was that the agreement? Hey. I believe so.
Yeah, the agreement, the agreement was that he got an extra forty hours of vacation time to use as he sees fit, it's not a.
Work that week, but he'll get paid.
As if he's working that way.
Maybe we're misunderstanding your calculation for salary. Do you use fifty two weeks times forty hours times the hourly rate to get salary? Is that what you use?
Two thousand eighty hours.
Right, so two thousand eighty, that's it, that's that's it, plus overtime, we're not talking about overtime right now. If he uses a vacation week, he's not working that week. It's still only fifty two weeks in a year, no matter how you. Divide it between his working time and his vacation time and his sick time, he only gets paid for fifty two weeks a year.
So just to be clear, the 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 board's offer, and I'd wanna see this in their actual writing, the board's offer was. Instead of working for a week, you can take the vacation that week.
Right, it's just forty hours of vacation time.
Yeah.
It's not money. It's it's one week that he won't work.
Yeah.
But it will be paid.
Yep.
But you can't have more than fifty two weeks in a year is the point that you were making.
I'd pay for more than fifty two weeks in a year.
Plus the overtime, which is a separate line item, but if in salaries.
I follow your point, I've I've got it.
All right, now, it's okay to have it there.
I'll just, I'll just delete it, and then if you go over budget, then let's.
But you're still not following us?
I don't agree with you, but it doesn't matter. Um, in, I need a number, if this is gonna happen. Um. I I don't.
Can we find this?
We said this was gonna happen this year, right?
Well, I don't think we said it was gonna happen this year. I think we intended it was gonna happen this year. And I thought we agreed that the money was available because of the money we saved not paying for three employees for a while.
I don't wanna put it in next year's budget, I I'm hoping it gets resolved this year.
But. Um. Are we, w- with the. With the, I don't know, I don't know how to phrase this, with the lost settlement, signed settlement? Thing, is it gonna delay it enough so it can't get paid this year? Well, I think that depends on the person in question. If he hustles over there and takes care of things quickly. Without further delay, I don't see why it couldn't happen this year.
What was the number though? What like?
It was forty four something. I I can find it here, hang on.
Forty four seventy years.
No, I don't think so, I was just looking here. You guys keep talking, I'll keep looking. Okay, and then the the other question that's come up is. Is. Is this a. I, my understanding is that this settlement was, if, a- as it says there, a retirement. Uh, contribution settlement so that the money would go into. A retirement account, not just a check. Is that a problem we need to solve tonight? It's, it's gotta be resolved. The money's gonna be coming from the town. Where we put it is, I don't think a problem we have to solve right now. And I think Deb should be answering to that.
I should be answering that?
Or the treasurer?
The treasurer should be.
Treasurer.
Okay.
Not the board.
Wait. So. But what, but what's, we just need the number.
I'm, keep talking, I'm looking, you distracted me.
Yeah, this year, right, with funds from this year, so it won't be in next year's budget.
But if if it if it wasn't reflected in this year's budget, then. Do we, uh, is is the purpose of putting it in next year's budget so that we can do it kind of the same way we did with winter sand where the the thing came in and. Or I guess it would be the reverse? Where the the bill came due in twenty fiscal year twenty five, but we're taxing for it in twenty six?
Uh, the reason I have it as a line item is because it has not yet been paid out in twenty five. It was not budgeted expense in twenty five, and I was not sure when. It was supposed to be paid out, so I put a line item in twenty six's budget to recognize the expense.
Okay.
Well, I have the number here, for whatever it's worth.
Okay.
Four thousand four hundred eight dollars and ninety one cents.
Thank you.
Is there anything preventing us from getting that paid this year and not having it in next year's budget?
I mean, there's nothing procedurally on our end, is, would there be a cash flow problem with that? If that was settled, say, in the next two to three weeks, rather than fiscal year twenty six?
So there's no reason that it couldn't be paid in twenty five if all of the documentation was in place and that was a retirement account identified to. Deposited into.
And Veevers is not allowed.
Veevers is not an option.
So why does it need to be? Put into a retirement account? If it's a settlement, surely it would be just general. Money.
Because it's a retirement.
So it's my understanding that this is a settlement based on uh.
Retirement.
Lack of interest in a retirement account.
It was a retirement account, it was retirement account.
So it needs to go into a retirement.
Retirement account.
Why, why though? Like that.
It's a legal thing, or he's gonna get taxed immensely on.
Taxed.
Okay, I see what you're saying, so it has to go into a retirement.
Or it has to go into, because it's pension, it has to go into something that's pension-related.
Okay, whereas if it was cut as just a check for forty four oh eight ninety one, it would be.
Taxed.
Taxed, okay.
It's taxable income.
Okay.
Is the explanation for why it can't go to Veevers something you can give in twenty words, or is it complicated?
They don't accept it because we didn't start. This is, it's my understanding, this is for back in twenty thirteen moving forward, so. We work with Veevers.
Yeah.
I still don't follow, but I'm gonna leave it there.
Plain and simple, Veevers won't allow it.
That was less than twenty words, thank you.
I still wanna know why, but let's leave that another day. It it's. But.
Okay, so the question is, do we want it as a lineup in twenty six or not?
Not if we could pay it this year. Is all the documentation gonna be in place too big?
Yeah, that's a good question.
That is one thing we are discussing in executive session.
Believe the last AP runs the twenty seventh.
You would think it could be.
Got a couple weeks to get it done.
Yes. Well, to get the agreement, the agreement.
Agreement's already.
Se- seems like that should be easy.
Yes, that will be done by Wednesday.
But, but is there a retirement account to put it into? This is the very problem we started with.
Yeah, we can, and we can find that out.
Okay, alright, so are we saying we don't want it in next year's budget? Can can. Uh, is it possible to hold on to the money until a retirement account is set up? With obvious certain understandings. With obvious certain understandings by the recipient?
Hold on to the money how? What do you mean?
In, as a line item in the budget.
And put it in twenty-six and pay for twenty-six.
Yeah.
Could be a line item in twenty-six.
It should be, it should be paid in twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
It shouldn't take that long, but set up an I R, I R A account, go to the bank, something up.
You're fully optimistic today, aren't you?
There's two weeks left.
Doesn't take that long.
Okay.
Okay, so my question is back to original.
No, we don't wanna.
There or not there?
We don't want it in there, we wanna get it to the car.
We're gonna take it care of it this fiscal year.
We gotta push. Okay. Fine.
Okay.
So, I did remove the FEMA portion of the Madbrook Bridge because those are expenses that have already been recognized, so no reason to recognize them.
Okay.
Um, that'll be the two hundred thousand dollar deficit that the town has to deal with. So Heather, can I just go back to that employment thing? Does it need a line item in for twenty twenty-five and put an expense in there for that? With the amount that they told you the settlement's gonna be, just so you have a? I mean, it'll be recognized in the budget to act, it'll find a budget to actual.
Okay.
Correct. Yep.
I'd kinda like to see the female line of credit interest go under, uh, select board instead of highway department. And I know this is weird, but it just really isn't the highway department, they have no control. A budget is something that Jim should control, and he has no control over that interest budget. I, I think that's a select board item, I don't think that's a Jim item. I don't feel like he has, he should be living to this budget and controlling it, and that's.
That's why I have it below the line.
Oh, I see what you mean.
It's not in.
It's, it's not in the highway budget.
It's not in what he controls.
Okay.
It's there because the expenses for FEMA all came out of the highway department. That's why the line of credit is reflected.
And that seems to track with what I saw from Hurricane Irene ten years and fifteen years ago.
Can we have total highway expenditures above that line that Jim controls?
So you want total highway expenditures and then total total?
I, well, that's why I was kinda thinking of moving it to select board, just because.
It's.
Future, future highway garage renovations should be there. And capital investment, vehicle purchase should be there, I'm just thinking that line of in, that credit interest shouldn't be there.
I mean.
I'm not.
I, I, I don't see.
It doesn't really matter where it's recognized.
Yeah.
I mean, the overall budget's gonna be the same regardless of where we track the expense.
True, but when we look at historical highway budgets.
That's, that's the way it was done historically, like FEMA twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, there was a huge spike in the highway department budget, it was because of line, lines of credit.
Okay, so I have the, um, so future highway garage renovations is an additional twenty-five thousand, and we talked about having a capital investment for vehicle purchases, which is another twenty-five thousand. So, um, highway budget ends up at eight fifty, which is a fifteen point seven five percent increase.
But the budget actual this year is six six seven to yesterday's date?
Yeah.
So, do we want another article in town meeting to have the surplus go to the building fund, the town garage repaired fund? Cause there's gonna be a large surplus this year.
Well.
We haven't understood this much.
There is not.
Yeah.
And there won't be a.
Well, that's true.
There won't be a surplus this year.
That's true. Cause we only got three weeks left.
Even, even if there was, though, that doesn't, the existence of a surplus in that line item, from what, it sounds like you were saying, last meeting doesn't necessarily indicate a surplus overall.
Correct.
Cause that money could be allocated elsewhere in the budget.
Yeah, the overall number won't be a surplus.
Yeah.
Is there gonna be enough money to pay for the garage renovation next year? I know we've kicked that down the road three, four years.
We just had to spend hundred eighty-nine thousand from the reserve for that bridge.
There may be, you might, it'll probably be a long.
Percent coming back?
Yeah.
So you're looking, so what I'd be looking for is a motion to approve the budget as it stands, and the total is one million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-seven.
I'm sorry, Heather, again?
Do you have a bottom, bottom line we can see?
I just added the numbers.
Oh.
Six forty-one, zero, zero, one, eighteen. Eight fifty, three sixty-seven, thirty-four, and one eighty-one, eight twenty-five.
What's the total again?
One million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, three seventy-six, seventy-seven.
And what was it last year?
Uh, one million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, eighty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Which is a percent increase of how much?
Um, right around sixteen percent.
That's tough. How's last year's again, if you would?
Um, one million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, eighty-five and seventy-eight cents.
Thank you.
What is interesting, though, is if you look at a historical, um, average, when you adjust town budgets for inflation, the one point six million is kind of right in the, you know, the mean of all the ups and downs. So when you adjust for inflation historically, that's been an average budget. There have been years where it's been high, like due to hurricanes, the last four fiscal years, it's been very low, um, relative to inflation. So the budget has essentially been inflation proof, so to speak, during some of the worst years of the inflation, and now it's kinda starting to get back up to normal.
Right, but that's nearly two hundred and fifty thousand additional dollars for our taxpayers.
Yes, it is, which is not.
Increase last year?
The increase last year was roughly, was a touch under a hundred thousand, it went from one point three two seven to one point four two three million. Fiscal year twenty-four.
You said a touch under one hundred?
Touch under a hundred, like maybe call it ninety, ninety-six thousand.
Heather, I'm not saying I don't wanna do this, but what if we take out the twenty-five thousand for the vehicle of the fire department?
For the what?
For the fire department vehicle fund.
You mean their capital?
Yes.
I thought that was their building.
That was the building. No, highway department.
And so now I'll get to that and take out the highway department's.
You want this done?
Yeah, just, just for, just to see, twenty-five there and then the twenty-five out of the fire department.
So reduce it by fifty-five.
They'll take you down fifty thousand, even if you took the other reserve out at seventy-five thousand.
I really hate to see that twenty-five though, cause I think that building needs some serious repairs.
Well, we know it does. And the impact is what, about two percent of the budget, if fifty thousand's gone?
And does the fire, the fire department doesn't have really a capital vehicle purchase thing, other than what's left over from the loan amount in that category?
They have.
It's a very small amount.
Right, they have a truck purchasing fund, which is going to be used to pay for the new fire truck when it is delivered.
Right.
Have they explored any grants for the firehouse? I mean, there's a tremendous amount of grants for fire agencies.
Oh, yeah.
So we, we've applied for.
You have.
We've applied for a lot.
Okay, so you got five of them this year, right?
Um, so we've gotten three and we have two more in the pipeline.
Okay, yes.
So Wade, the answer to your question is, yes, I apply for everything for the fire.
And are they not getting them, or are they?
So a lot of them are federal, so they're national, so they're very competitive. The one that was just received for the fire department was a National American Firefighters Grant, so it was nation.
Okay.
Yeah, it was very competitive, a hundred and something.
So I guess, you know, the, the problem that the board's chewing on is, it's a sort of eye-watering increase, is it defensible to, uh, uh, penny-pinching public, and I don't say that as a pejorative, it's more Yankee skinflints here.
Well, you put it to the taxpayers at town meeting, and they have the power to make motions to amend line item by line item. So if you put the, both, all the reserves back in, the vehicle capital, uh, reserve for the highway department and for the building for the fire department, um, you know, they could make motions from the floor to take those line items out entirely. I remember there was a motion from the floor either last year or the year before, that I believe Howard Remick made for a certain amount to get deducted, I can't remember what it was for, what line item it was on.
Okay, so.
Is it by line item, or did they just vote down the budget?
So you can amend, there can be, uh, there can be a motion on the floor to amend the budget to decrease it by a certain dollar amount, which means that the budget is defeated and the select board goes back to the drawing board. If it passes.
Which would assign item.
They absolutely do it by line item, so they would say, um, you know, the highway, the overall budget is one point six million, so they could say, go cut out two hundred thousand from the budget. And then the select board's duty would be to cut two hundred thousand dollars from the budget wherever they found it.
And then we would have to have another special meeting to.
Yeah, approve the budget.
Yeah, cause we hit it.
So you can't amend the budget at town meeting and vote on it?
So you put amendments, so, so let's just say somebody said, um, I'd like to see the highway department budget amended by removing the twenty-five thousand dollars in, in capital investment, and that is voted on, and it says yes, and then the moderator would ask the treasurer for what the new dollar amount was.
Okay, so we can do it at town meeting, you could.
You can do it line item by line item, and I have heard times when that has been done. I've also heard times when it's just been reduced the budget by a certain dollar amount, and the select board has the ability to go rework the budget.
A new select board.
Yeah.
A new select board, not a old select board.
Which, so if it's done line item by line item, there is no need for the select board to go in and readjust.
Correct.
So, it's, it seems like if someone wants to make a motion from the floor, then it's in our best interest as the board to say, okay, you wanna make this motion, which line item do you wanna see reduced and by what amount, so that we can, the budget can be final tonight, and we don't have to have another special town meeting to vote on it?
Well, the moderator is the one that runs the town meeting, so.
True.
There's value in presenting a, a well-honed budget at town meeting, just having gone through the exercise so that we can fairly represent that we really tried to hone the budget.
I just worry about the age of Jim's vehicles, he's got some oldies.
Yeah.
But, could that number be smaller, maybe?
Or could we take the thirty thousand dollars out that we added back into maintenance? Split the baby?
Maybe make the capital investment ten thousand instead of twenty-five?
Oh, nothing, I, I was saying something different, you know, maybe, we took the thirty-eight thousand.
I just worry that he's gonna be patching those old ones, and the maintenance costs are gonna go up because he doesn't have a capital purchase fund to get new stuff, so I think, I think we'd better leave the maintenance where it is, because I think, I don't think he has the money to buy new vehicles.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that. You know, if you put, like the loader, it sounded like what happened with the loader.
Pretty good at numbers, where do you think?
Sort of major, so. Are, 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 are we expecting that same amount?
I hope not.
This is for new purchase. So, you know, maybe, that, that's what I was getting at, yeah. You hope you've done a lot of repairs.
Purchase price.
That it's gonna be good for those one, but, I, I'm just thinking that was, we added that thirty thousand in.
Are we gonna, are we gonna attempt to start a capital investment vehicle purchase account? Or are we gonna zero it out like they do in a case?
I didn't know that, I just wanted to see.
Cause I see the value.
Yeah. Yeah.
You don't have it, is that right?
So it's twenty-five.
Because there's such a high demand for that vehicle, so that, so the fire truck is specializing.
I think we gotta start putting some money somewhere.
There's only like two.
I'd rather put tax one five back in and take the other thirty out.
So that's a very significant.
You're talking thirty on the vehicle.
On the maintenance.
If, if you were trying to get that, that you can take off, that you can drive off a lot, but not necessarily.
No, that was the case, and that's quite a consideration.
So.
So would you like the taxpayer to decide, or what do you want to do?
The taxpayers to decide on.
On whether this budget is appropriate, or whether they're going to ask you, ask this new select board to cut?
Well, part of my thought is, if we're gonna present the budget as we had originally, uh, put the numbers in before Wade made his suggestion, I think, uh, we ought to be able to stand up and defend it, and if the audience present at town meeting doesn't like it, then the discussion starts.
I'd like to see a budget, this one, that we've just gone through tonight, and then one that if the town clerk and the town treasurer are re-elected, what does that budget look like? And we could maybe get that one passed at town meeting instead.
In that scenario, I think you're thinking, we'll save out of the budget about twenty, what was it, twenty-eight thousand?
Half of seventy-six thousand, and then there was, in the salary part, there was a lot of money too.
Thirty-seven thousand.
I calculated salaries at one forty-one something with the two point eight percent cost of living, and we had it up in the one fifties, so I think there's money there if we do it after elections.
That seems to be relatively small.
Yeah.
Bigger than the twenty-five thousand dollar vehicle purchase.
Well, there's that.
I think you're gonna, I'm letting it go into this, be safe.
So, do you wanna try to fare any more out of it, or are we gonna approve it as, as it is?
I make a motion to approve it as it is.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'll lose in favor, you put the twenty-five, oh, okay, I'll lose in favor, do I need, do I need?
Could you put the dollar money? Or do you want to just put as is?
Uh, well, we could say, you said it was one million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, three seventy-six, seventy-seven?
Correct.
Is that okay to make that part of your motion?
Yep, so a friendly amendment, I so move.
Okay, I'll lose in favor.
Well, I'll second the motion then as amended.
Okay. Trying to.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll lose in favor of the, uh, amended motion. Say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Was that a aye you're opposed, or an aye you approve?
Well, that's a good point, no, aye approved. Nay was approved, uh, disapproved.
Yes, but you said it when you were soliciting for nays.
I did say aye.
Okay, okay, so that's a, that's a five oh I'm hearing?
Yeah, it's five oh. Okay. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Heather.
Congratulations. Okay.
What's next on the agenda?
Gravel.
Next on the agenda is gravel crushing contract. Uh, when did you ask Jim how soon that he would need the?
He said by the end of June, so June thirtieth.
June thirtieth?
Mm-hmm.
And was he okay with the two options still?
Yes, he said, um, he said the two options were good.
Okay, and when do we want? Those changes could be made pretty rapidly and and get it advertised, do we want bid opening by January twelfth meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I think they gotta get. I think they gotta get it as soon as possible so that they can meet a June 30th date.
Okay.
So they can schedule that.
So we'll, we'll have to authorize, uh,
Advertisement?
Yeah, the advertisement for it.
Deb.
Deb, when, when, when we advertise the gravel crushing contract, you remember how? How many times we?
Have we advertised it?
Yeah.
I think we historically were like five.
Okay.
Grabbing just the paper, you need to go up to those people that Jim knows and personally request it, I believe. I think that's the best way.
Is it better, better to do that and go through the?
I would seek out those who have been in the past.
Yeah.
Which was Manchester, Brook?
Qualified bidders.
Jay McDonald has been a bidder in the past.
Well, we could look at.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, okay.
He knows the plan. I think if you went back and looked at the minutes.
Yeah, tell us who.
2024, June 2024, that would tell you who the bids.
Yep.
Who submitted.
Manchester, Brooke, materials, Jay McDonald.
And as long as you send them each the same.
I can't, there's one from Llinville that I can't think of any better. Yeah. Okay, um.
Simpson.
Simpson.
Simpson, Brooke.
Simpson.
Simpson Dirtworks, yeah. I don't know if there are any others, but I think those are going to work. Okay, and so do we need a motion to do that?
So you're gonna, you're gonna, I'm gonna say, who is going to contact those and do you have the specs?
So this.
Yep, go ahead.
The specs we have, um, Ron, I think you sent us this document last week.
Yep.
Um, it was an updated version. Uh, I showed it to Jim. He said it all, uh, it all looked good. It was the, um, three-quarter inch, um, crush and run. Um, all we need to change in this is uh, duh, 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 duh.
Bid opening.
Yes.
Completion.
Uh, compensation and billing. No, no, that's the part they fill out.
So I'm assuming you're gonna put a deadline as to when you would like to enter?
Yes.
And assuming that January 12 sealed and you'll open at the meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Correct?
Seal bid January 12.
So is this an action item tonight or an action item to accept the bid?
Well, the, no bids have been received. This is an action item to put the gravel crushing contract out to bid. So essentially from the time.
We're not technically spending money at this moment though, are we?
No, 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 we don't expend money until we accept the bid.
Does it need to be an action?
It, well, it needs to be an action item per the purchasing policy because we have to.
Oh, okay, it's purchase policy.
We have to advertise.
Okay.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion and also move? Second?
Yep, I'll, I'll second unless that was one from you.
No, I was asking for a second.
I'll second it.
So all those in favor of advertising the gravel crushing contract with, um, a completion dated, do we need that in that June 30th or just advertising it?
So the, so the date we need to put.
Due January 12.
It's due January 12 by six. 12th is a Monday, that's the day of our. Okay.
The specification of the contract itself will.
Okay, so you don't want.
Terms bringing it here.
I would rather have it in my possession.
Yep.
Okay, okay, yeah, we can do that. Okay, um, can I read it back?
So move to advertise, uh, the crushing, uh, contract, uh, with a due date of 3:30 PM on Monday, January 12, 2026.
And say, yeah, due date before 3:30 PM.
Before.
No later than.
Any time. Well, they can also get it in earlier than that. They don't have to bring it at that time.
Whoever's making the home call for that person just reiterate it.
Yes.
3:30 because then you get in trouble if somebody coming in and passing you on. Can you really accept it because it's late?
Yeah.
And then you get into that whole mess again.
Yeah. But sometimes when you advertise and you don't say before 3:30 PM, they'll all come at 3:30 PM and you don't want that.
Okay, so due date of no later than 3:30 PM.
That's the, the way we do it legally, no later than.
Okay. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, next up is, um.
Citizen concerns.
Uh, well, the payroll policy.
Yep.
Um, the payroll policy needs to be revised. Uh, Deb brought it to my attention due to our changing of the personnel policy and it's basically just changing the employees are paid bi-weekly by direct deposit. And, uh, and, uh, you've all got a copy of it. The, the first page is the current policy.
You're gonna put that on January 12 agenda?
Yeah, it's going to be on the January 12th agenda for approval.
Are we, uh, doing any amendments tonight or to the proposed policy?
Is it?
Yeah, we can wait until January.
Okay.
It's just the first read.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Deb, I didn't mean you're up.
Just mull it over.
Okay. Very good. The only, the only things I'm noticing, I mean, other than changing the, um, the payroll schedule thing to say employees are paid weekly, uh, weekly to employees are paid bi-weekly, um, it looks like the deductions and voluntary, mandatory and voluntary deductions were not put in the new policy. Was that just like because it's redundant or, okay? Okay. Cause the only voluntary deductions that included were the vision and supplemental life. Cause everything else is.
Is this just an internal policy?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on that, if not, citizens concerned.
Oh, I just have a, it's not much of concern, but, um, I was working on the garage and, you know, I didn't know where we were at on that. And I realized that I needed to con- innovate a bit of the budget because my original letter detailing the potential contractors of, uh, October 22nd, I think I said it's 7 PM. And then Ron replied to me on November 9th and he said, did Marcel reply to the email? Cause he was included. And on the 11th, I replied back to Ron, I said, no. And then I haven't heard anything since. So I just wanted to know, what exactly do you want me to do this?
So, so you're saying you had found three contractors to do the work?
Everybody, I said all of you, I sent all of you an email with the details here, we asked you how. Yeah, there. And that, and that was because I had this whole list of contractors, there was like 15 or so in there. And I looked at everyone and looked at their past projects to see, are they capable of doing this kind of a project?
Right.
And I narrowed it down to three. There was three that could probably.
So you found three qualified bidders for us?
Well, yes, I found three that would be most likely qualified bidders. Yeah. And so I just wanted to know what, wanted me to do from here.
Well, because we didn't receive any bids when we did the.
Correct. And so I, my question was in that, in that letter, in a, in a previous letter, um, do you want me to contact these? And I suggest, and, and then I also said, but it would probably be better if someone from the select board contacted them because I'm just a volunteer and I might not be taken seriously. And I'm willing to write a letter. And then, you know, you guys can sign off on it and I'll sign it too. And, uh, just what do you want me to do?
Yeah, I think we should. I, I, I admittedly kind of dropped the ball on it.
I just wanted to know exactly what you want me to do. I wanted to write the letter and, but I think still it should be signed by, you know, at least one member of the select board too.
What kind of timing do you feel like we're looking at here to get action next year now, right?
Yeah, it would be next year. It's not going to, and of course, you know, anybody who bids on it and if we accept their bid and if we find money somehow or a loan or whatever we, whatever you choose to do, they're not going to be able to start such a project till summertime, obviously. They're not going to do this in the wintertime.
So we could, we could reach out, as you're suggesting, reach out to those three contractors, uh, just like we're doing with gravel crushing.
Fun to reach out to now because this is, they're trying to line up work for the summer already at this point. And, uh, you want to make sure, you know, if, you know, we decide that we actually want to do this project, we're in line and we have a contractor. Cause if you start doing this in the summer, already booked for, you know, X number of months, six months, is that what they say? So we're just.
So what's the board, what, would you like Suki to compose the?
Suki, could I play devil's advocate for a moment? Notwithstanding all of your fabulous volunteer work on this project so far.
Right.
I just want to ask the question, does this avenue make sense versus start from scratch and build a brand new building?
Well, that's, that would be a select board decision.
I know it would, but what do you think?
Well, you know, I'm not an expert and, uh, all I can say is looking at from a tax and expense, I don't think you could get the, the townspeople to approve like, you know, whatever it's going to cost for a new building, building, which is going to be probably close to a billion.
Oh, I think at least.
At least, you know, and whether this renovation, you know, I can't imagine what it would cost. And I don't really know. I'm, I'm just picking up the top of my head. I don't know.
We all are right now.
Yeah, and I don't know what it would cost. The renovation, 250 grand, 300 grand, I don't know, but.
If we do that, we still have an old building.
We still have an old building, but you know what? It's not that, it's not that bad shape. Once, if you look at that building, it's got a good foundation because the engineer said the foundation was great. Wasn't anything wrong with it. The, the main thing wrong with it is the whole roof system, even.
It's from them doing an addition. They, they messed it up by putting an addition on.
Yeah, they messed up, they messed up the trusses and everything because they actually cut away some of the supporting parts of, of the roof wrappers when they put the addition off. Like, it's kind of a no-no. And right now it's not even, it doesn't have enough of the internal support structures because there's supposed to be extra things on the rafters to the joists to, to meet any current codes for current snow loads and wind loads. Which is not like interesting. So, I mean, you know, you're asking me and I, I don't know, I'm just looking on the project. I'm not, I'm not a contractor, I'm a volunteer. But, but you would have to think about this in terms of what, what are the taxpayers willing to do?
Right, and that question is also informed by which is economically most beneficial to the town over the long term.
Over the long term, right. And if you put a whole new roof structure on it, it's probably going to extend the life of that building significantly. At this point, I'm not, I'm concerned about the life of the current state of this building. Because, because of what the engineer said.
Mm-hmm. In other words, if we had a really heavy snow winter, we.
With a big, with a big wind.
We would start to be worried about things.
Well, that's what his opinion was. I'm not an engineer, so I just took his word for it.
Okay.
Anyway, does that help?
So it does, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm just doing my best to.
Oh, no, and, and Suki, I believe I speak for everyone on the board here when I say thank you so much for all your work you've put into this.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it. I just, I said I would do it and I'm not going to keep on a word here.
No, we appreciate that.
Yeah, I think we ran up against the money wall. We didn't have the money and
Yep.
we just sort of lost steam.
I think.
We need to get it going again so that we can get this awarded by spring and.
You know, I knew you were concerned with the budget and all this kind of stuff.
Yes.
Okay, so.
I just wanted to refer to your question again. You gotta be thinking about this.
Right, and we gotta find money somehow.
I know, and, and looking at everybody and, you know, the tax increases that are over the face because, you know, we have this huge.
The school.
Yeah, the school, which is the big thing. And the town is miserable, you know, and its stuff just goes up. And you have to expect that, that the school thing is, is going to kill.
That's, that hurts.
I mean, that's what, two-thirds to 70% of the tax bill? Yeah.
Which is, you know, it's unfortunate that the state takes this much money away from towns. You know, and I don't know, you know, I've always thought it's like all the towns want to get together, lobby the, lobby the state. So you can't continue this, you know, to put this burden on the taxpayer, but yet you don't allow the towns to keep a fair portion of the tax for local use. But, you know, I don't know how you fix that.
Okay, so with the, with the board in agreement, we'd like Suki to.
Yes.
Proceed.
Right.
I'll write a letter and then you guys.
Which one of us will take the lead?
Well, I think the chair upside, unless I'm mistaken.
And, uh, I don't know.
Okay.
Ron, do you disagree?
No.
By the, uh.
I still have all the PDFs that I saved, the entire package. If anybody wanted to look at all the engineering stuff, I have all of it.
Right.
Including all the diagrams and everything. I just saved that just because that's would be a convenient thing if I was a contractor, I'd be asking for that.
And Ron, are you, would you take on calling the three bidders that she's narrowed it down to and see what they say? See how they feel about putting in a, a bid for us?
Yeah.
See if they're interested?
Yeah, I could do that.
Well, yeah, because they may or may not be, you don't have any control over that.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, well, I can do that. Unless somebody really has a burning desire to.
No, I know, uh, you do, uh, quite a bit. I just, uh, wonder if I could handle that, but, um, if I recall your presentation, you had a list of how many and you narrowed it down to three that you thought were really.
Well, yeah, yeah, I, I don't know if I have that original list. I think I saved it, but I'm not, I'm not necessarily.
Do you remember?
They were, and they were, because the reason why I narrowed them down, they were all, all their projects were, you know, home building, home renovations, you know, renovate kitchen, kitchens. I mean, that, that's, you know, that's what they do. So that, that's out of the question, obviously.
All right. Sounds good. Thanks, Suki.
Okay, I'll do that. I'll get that out to you in about a week.
Thank you, we can discuss it at Jan, Jan 12.
Yeah, I think we should. I think we should get that rolling again. Give the new, give the new board a, a leg up on getting that going in spring.
Any other? Kathy?
Yeah, I have a statement, but I was disappointed to see that Waterford made the paper again last week. It's, uh, uh, between the town office and the select board and discrepancies that have gone on in this board, not always working with the town office. Like Mr. Jones doing the, um, highway budget without the treasurer's input. Or Mr. Yarrow not doing the fire department, which you were both assigned to work with the treasurer and the department heads of the select meeting. I just think that the treasurer's there and if it had the budget done well earlier, if people had all worked together. And I'd like to, uh, and that was one of the items, Mr. Jones, that you put in your letter that you were going to fix the past 36 months of embarrassment and strain on the legacy of the town. And I just think that's just one thing that needs to be fixed. And the continuous violation of open meeting, meetings and minutes not getting posted. As of right now, we still have two that are outstanding. And I just have some other items that are outstanding throughout the year that I'd just like to know where we stand on them. The Dyon, Doyon's case, um, at nine, eight, Mr. Jones was going to contact the attorney. And, um, then at 10:13, it was tabled, um, because the, the attorney hadn't been contacted. And where do we stand on this item? Uh, uniforms were approved way back and we were going to get prices on, someone was going to get prices on shirts. And have the uniforms been purchased? This is a continuous thing year after year that's a. This is a continuous thing, year after year, that the highway department asked for uniform shirts and I don't think it's been done. Um, June eleventh, the slight ledge issue came up, was brought before the board. On August eleventh, the board voted to approve six hundred dollars for cameras. And, um, the snowmobile club was gonna work with the highway department to fix that road. Has any of that been done, are the cameras in place? And, uh, I would just like to remind the board that, uh, on ten twenty-one, um, Marcel reminded the board that they were elected to do what was best for the taxpayers. And Mr. Jones, you stated, no, that was not true, you were, um, to manage town affairs. But the definition of a select board member is they are tasked with executing the will of the people they serve, including managing town affairs. And I just would like to see this board work a little better with, um, department heads throughout. Um, Ms. Hayes, you're in charge of the ethics liaison. Has everybody completed the ethics training that was to have been completed?
The last spreadsheet I saw from Deb, there were a few people who didn't complete it, the select board completed it.
Uh, no, the select board has not completed it. There are two members that have not.
Oh.
At least I have not been notified of those.
Oh, the last time I looked, I thought they were all checked.
I did mine, but I, uh, documented it, uh, late, probably September sometime.
I believe I do not have your date, and I, well, I don't believe I have your.
Really, I, I did it too, I can, I can get you that.
Yeah, the, when we, when we get our certificate and put your, we type in your email.
I don't remember doing that for mine.
Well, it was in the instructions.
No, I, I've taken it, I don't have the document for you.
Yeah, July, July twenty-eighth is mine.
And I would just would like to remind the select board that, uh, warrants aren't being signed. That the auditors found they're not being signed in a timely fashion and, um, the balanced budget policy states that there has to be a majority of board members that sign them in a timely fashion. And sometimes accounts payable and payroll are held up because they aren't being signed. We don't have three. I believe there's two members who did it quite quickly, but the third one is not. I understand the state said you only need one, but our policy states there has to be at least three. And I know the prior auditors required all five, which is what should actually happen because it prevents fraud. And, uh, this, the prime example was Mr. Yarrow last week at the meeting when you asked about the Medbrook. And when that was going to be paid and when it was gonna be processed. And it had already been processed and, uh, so obviously the warrant, you didn't see the warrant when you questioned Heather when it was gonna be paid. So, if the warrants were looked at on a timely fashion, this would, it would be done, so I guess that's it.
I have one other question.
No, Robyn would like to speak first.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see you.
But I heard your voice. Um, I think you guys actually do a really good job, I appreciate the effort that you put into it. I think you work with an office that does appear to be combative sometimes, and I'm sorry for that, maybe that's just personalities.
Combative among ourselves?
Cause you've got a lot to say. Well, nobody really wants to, you should be job, they get beat up all the time.
I know they do.
I think they do, you do know they do.
I, I think they've done a great job, I just don't wanna see it go back to where we were a few years ago.
I think you're absolutely transparent, I actually specifically sat down to be in the meetings class, just to follow through, to make sure like what is, that whole deal before. And I think that was just a confluence of a bad timing and that there was no, you regularly are hyperbolic in your letters and you say that they are violating town meeting all the time and they're not transparent, and I think that is not a fair assessment. Thank you for listening to me.
Okay.
Oh, my, my only comment was, we talked a long time ago, and I should have mentioned this when Heather was here, but I forgot. Like, we already talked about having a time clock at the town garage. Like, it just, it keeps slipping through the cracks.
So, I was on a select board four weeks ago and they looked at it, they looked into it. They really did, and it wasn't me that was in charge of it, so I can't tell you all the details. But it was either Mike Barrett or Gary Allard or the two of them together. And we should probably hit them up for an answer why it was nixed, cause it was nixed.
Oh.
Time clock was nixed, but I, I cannot at this moment in time telling you why, other than I remember hearing the comment that you can, if, if it's fraud, you're worried about, um, those can be manipulated as well.
All right, digital sign-ins.
And you could have someone sign in for you. You could have someone sign out for you, so there.
I think.
They looked into.
It was looked into.
Would it make doing the payroll easier?
It sounds like it would be if it was digital and corresponded with some system that Marcel uses, it sounds like it would be time-saving. But, but there really was, and I can't remember if it was Gary or Mike, there really was someone who looked into time clocks for the garage and then they pooped through the idea for whatever various reasons.
I think it would be easier for Marcel if we had some sort of program like a lot of places have, like the state where who could go into work, he signs in, puts in his time for the day, it automatically goes to Marcel.
Right, and so these handwritten notes.
It doesn't work.
And especially if the treasurer, if that means twenty hours, you're gonna want a time clock.
Or something.
Or something, to streamline, to make that process a lot better.
I just don't think a time clock would stream the client.
No, not a time clock, but most, most companies use the software that you punch in and punch out and the supervisor has to sign the hours.
Anything else? If not?
I will make a motion to enter executive session.
I second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Personnel matters.
Say aye.
Say aye.
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 Those opposed?
I wasn't driving south tomorrow at three AM.